This meeting is called for order. Councilmember Mr. Locke will lead us in prayer and Mr. Mason will lead us with the pledge.
O merciful Father, we ask that you look down on these servants of Bastrop, the new mayor, the city council. We ask that our judgments be not only justified but also pleasant in your eyesight. These and many other blessings we ask of your son, Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I wish to welcome you to this meeting with the Board of Alderman and Mayor. Thank you so much for sharing this evening with us. Ms. Goldman, would you do roll call to determine a quorum?
Mr. Moore.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Mason.
Here.
Mr. Armstrong.
Here.
Mr. Locke.
Present.
Thank you, Mrs. Goldman. Item number three, announcements. On tomorrow night, the Monroe Fire Department will be graduating five new firemen. And we are certainly proud of that accomplishment and I plan to attend that graduation along with our chief Montgomery. Also tomorrow at 12 noon, that's commemorating September 11, "Cry Out, America," there will be community prayer at the north side of the courthouse. And you're welcome to attend this event. St. Joseph Cathedr Church, Sixth Annual Blue Mass, pray for law enforcement officers, firefighters, and emergency medical technicians, October the 2nd at 12 noon at St. Joseph Church. I ask you mark your calendars to attend that event. Community-wide planning committee, October the 13th at the municipal center at 7:00 PM, the public is invited to attend. We've been working with Sharon Swanson on our land use plans and she has also been speaking with Mr. Ed B., and you're going to hear a presentation from him shortly. They have been merging their ideas and we've certainly merged ideas that have come to us from the transition team and we want to put out the best possible plan to move this community forward. We are going to extend the time to give away items at the Bastrop Municipal Center from 8 until 12 noon. Mr. Tans, is that correct?
That's Saturday.
Saturday. We had originally planned it just for three days, but we're going to extend it an extra day and the public has certainly appreciated what has been done for the past few days. Those are all of my announcements. Are there any other announcements? Okay, item number four. At this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the previous minutes, August 13, 2009, regular meeting and the August 18 meeting, special meeting. Let's take them one at a time. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
A second motion.
Motion and second. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. August 18 meeting, the special meeting, I'll entertain a motion.
May I make a motion?
Motion.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number five. Mr. Armstrong, Finance Committee report, Resolution 091298, bills, claims for the month of August 2009.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution 091298.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
Properly moved and second. Any questions? Discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number five. Mr. Armstrong, Finance Committee report, Resolution 091298, bills, claims for the month of August 2009.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution 091298.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
Properly moved and second. Any questions? Discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number five. Mr. Armstrong, Finance Committee report, Resolution 091298, bills, claims for the month of August 2009.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution 091298.
We have a motion?
I'll second.
Properly moved and second. Any questions? Discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number six. It's my pleasure to present to you Mr. Ed B. with Ty America and he's going to do a briefing on our redevelopment plan. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I came in from Baton Rouge. I wanted to community have to market, shows up with other industries that would be needing the same assets. And so I've got the staff for you tonight. Important part, that's much better. Those are where people live and the rings are 30, 40, and 50 mile rings of the city of Bastrop. And if you count those people within those 30 mile ring, you see that you've got 137,000 workers within that area. So that you've got a lot to market and promote as a community. You're really part of the Monroe labor market and the Monroe metro area. And so you've much bigger community from a marketing and promotion standpoint than just the parish itself. That really gets you a lot more attention because there's a lot more and bigger projects that you can accommodate as a community if you sell yourself and promote yourself that way. The interesting thing we found is there's 11,000 manufacturing workers within that 30 mile ring too. You've got a large manufacturing workforce in this area of northeast Louisiana and southeast Arkansas. And what's really important, you've got a lot of skilled maintenance and welding people. And that's very important because there's a shortage of those kinds of skills in the US workforce. So the fact that you have those skills in abundance is something that you can market and promote as a community. And that's certainly one of the things we are going to do in the recovery plan when we get to the marketing phase, which I'll talk about in a second, is to market and promote that. Because it really is something that sets you apart from a lot of other communities your size. Let's have the next slide. We did a workforce assessment too. And we did that, we did an intercept survey is what it's called. 463 people participated. It was back in April. The little dots on the map are where the folks that participated were from. You can see they're from throughout the entire parish. And so it was a statistically valid sample. That's what we wanted to get. We talked to people that were employed as well as those that were unemployed to get some idea of what the skills are in the workforce and what we have to market and promote as a community, what you have. Let's have the next slide. One of the things that we found, and it kind of confirms that map that we showed, is that about 30% of the people in this parish work outside the parish. That's what they told us. Wachita Parish is certainly a big part of that. As you can see, that's outside of Morehouse Parish. That's the parish where more people work than any other. But look at the other communities that people are out commuting to, actually County Arkansas. We actually talked to people in that survey that worked in Dallas and in Harris, Texas, which is Houston. People that apparently, maybe they come home on the weekends and then they go somewhere else to work during the week. Unusually, large number of people like that in this workforce. And clearly, people only do that because they don't have the choice or they don't have a viable choice of something equal in Morehouse Parish to keep them here. And so again, that's something to sell and market and promote as a community. Let's have the next slide. When we looked at the survey, we found that there's about 6,200 people in the workforce here, just in Morehouse Parish, that are available. They're either underemployed, they're unemployed, and they're employed part-time and would like to work full-time. So that's about 6,000 people out of a workforce of 15,000 is what the Louisiana Workforce Commission says you have here, people working. The important things though, were some of the things we found. 84% have a high school diploma, which is above the rates for the whole state of Louisiana and Arkansas. So people here are better educated than the average you would find in Louisiana or Arkansas. 67% are willing to work shifts, which is very important from a manufacturing standpoint. We don't normally find that high a ratio. 27% have skills or education in office occupations. You probably haven't thought of yourselves as having a workforce where you could do office functions here. But what these numbers say is that is a viable thing to do here. Now, you don't have vacant office space right here to market and promote to the companies that would want to hire those workers. And that's one of the things to work on as a community. But you have a workforce that could fill that need for companies. A lot of manufacturing occupations, especially in special trades like welding and electrical. One of the things we found that was interesting is a majority of the IP workers are still unemployed and most of those working are interested in switching jobs. A third are now in retailing or construction. What that says is a lot of people, rather than move out of this community, chose to take some job in this community to get them through a transition so that until times got better. So there's a lot of loyalty to the community here and that's something, again, to market and promote as a community. Something to be very proud of. One of the things we looked at is the skills in the pulp and paper industry. And this table, I think you have it in a report, it might be easier for you to look at it there. But what you find is the pulp and paper industry trains a lot of people in blue collar skilled trades like maintenance mechanics and industrial electricians. There's a lot of skilled people it takes in that industry to keep that industry going. And that is a real resource that you have as a community because there's a shortage of those kind of people in the US workforce. So the fact that you have a lot of them, you have an abundance of those people, is again, something for you to market and promote and something to distinguish you from a lot of the other communities around the United States that are trying to attract manufacturing operations. Let's have the next slide. So this gets us down, when we took all of this information and we matched that up with the kind of companies and the kind of industries that need those resources, what we found, iron and steel, a lot of plastics, basic chemicals, pesticides, fertilizers, then a lot of food processing operations, different things like fruits and vegetables, animal food, steel fabrication, wet corn milling, and other food manufacturing. So those are the ideal targets to match up with those assets idled by IP. And so let me have the next slide. Another one that's looming on the horizon is the biofuels and the biorefining. All of those alternative fuel industries that are just now emerging in the US economy, those use chemical process skills, the same kind of skills you use in the pulp and paper industry, the same kind of labor, the same kind of water and wastewater capacity. So all of those idle assets you have are going to be more valuable to you in the future because this industry is going to take off and grow as we're diversifying our economy away from fossil fuels. And you've got a wonderful story to tell to that industry as it emerges. Let's have the next slide. The kinds of industries that would want to locate here and that are in those industries that I showed you, they would want to have standalone sites, 10 to 50 acres that would be rail-served with access to a lot of water and wastewater capacity. If you've got it available, the cogeneration assets that IP would also be an advantage if IP would make those available to somebody. And we'll just have to wait and see on what they want to do with that particular asset. Let's have the next slide. When we looked at everything that the community had to market and promote, this is what we found. You've got a manufacturing workforce with a high unemployment rate. You've got excellent rail service. You have daily switching from both the UP and the KCS lines and the terminals down in Monroe without any kind of load limits. That's really unusual to have daily switching in and out of a city of this size. And that's a real advantage for those kind of companies that need rail service. And all of those companies and industries that I showed you on the list, they all need rail service. You have your own water and sewer capacity to serve a million gallons a day of load, which is enough to accommodate almost all of the food processing industries that you would find. And there's a lot of chemical process industries that would not need more capacity than that. You have a good engineering workforce from your regional colleges. You drive that 50 mile radius around Bastrop. You've got two or three universities within that radius and several of them have engineering schools. There's a shortage of engineers in the US workforce and you've got two prime universities producing engineers. So that's a real resource for you. Technical colleges, and particularly the Bastrop campus, has an oversubscribed welding program. You've got good industrial electronics programs. Those are real good skillsets too, something to market and promote. You've got good state and federal incentives. And you've got some available buildings today. The building that IP put on the market out near the industrial park, I think it was a processing facility at one time or a warehouse, that is a prime building. I'm sure that building is going to be taken by somebody because there's very few of those anywhere in the southeast that size in that condition. And you have all the other ingredients that someone would want to have a manufacturing operation here. So I'm very optimistic that you'll see some traffic and eventually some tenant in that building. The two things from a community standpoint, and this is why when we get into the vision and diversification strategy, it's important to look at these rail-served sites with utility connections. That's something that you need to develop as a community. And then office buildings. You've got a workforce to accommodate office employers, but you don't have the space to accommodate office employers right now. But that's something you can certainly work on and fix. Let's have the next slide. So this is a recap of where we are in the recovery plan. We've done all the research. We've identified the targets. We've got a list of 2,000 companies in those target industries. We're ready to roll. We're waiting on a quote from a printer in terms of the brochure that we would be sending out and mailing to all of these folks. So in the next two to three weeks, we'll get that marketing and promotion campaign underway. One of the reasons we haven't done that earlier than this is what you see down there in red, the national economy. It's a big constraint. It's been a real big constraint in terms of anybody making major capital investments. But what we've seen in the last 30 days suggests that the economy has stabilized. It's even growing in some cases. And we're seeing a whole different attitude among manufacturers and among private sector companies in terms of their interest, again, in expanding and making new investments. So we think the time is right to launch that campaign right now. Let's have the final slide. So as I've mentioned, and I think perhaps Mayor Olive will, might have some comment on this as well, the recovery plan is well underway. The marketing part of that's going to be kicked off and underway very quickly in the next two to three weeks. But the most important thing, I think, as a community, is this long-term strategy. You can be anything you want to be and you can be things that you couldn't have been when you had a paper mill here. So you've got some wonderful new opportunities awaiting you, but what you have to do as a community is you have to come together and have collectively decide what that vision is. Where do you want to go as a community? How do you want to be in the future? Do you want to be different? Do you want to be more of an office and services economy? Do you want to have healthcare as a bigger part of your economy here? Do you want to continue to have manufacturing presence here? Those are all big, important decisions. But the next six months and the process we have in place will give you a framework for answering those questions and building a consensus so you can go forward in a new direction. Be happy to answer any questions. I think I've probably run over time.
Are there any questions for Mr. B.?
I have so appreciated the information that Mr. B. has provided for us. And we do have to remain optimistic about our community. I know that one of the concerns with all the industries coming up around us, Delhi with the Sweet Potato Factory and the V-vehicle in Monroe, people kind of panicked whether that was going to eat up our labor force. But looking at your statistics, we're going to be just fine. We still have an available workforce to meet the needs of the future trainee.
You still do. And the thing I would say, those numbers where you look at where people work, people don't want to move from this community. They might take a job in Wachita Parish or some other parish, but if they can choose, they'll choose to work here. And you've always got that that you can sell as a community.
Thank you, Mr. B. We're looking to have a kickoff towards the end of the month and we are waiting for information from the governor's office before we go any further with the plan. So please be on the lookout for that announcement. Any questions, councilmen? Thank you. Item number seven. It is my pleasure to appoint Mike Palm to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Palm is here. Would you come to the microphone, please, and just introduce yourself and give us a brief synopsis? I think the planning and the redevelopment could not have happened at a more opportune time to have both of these plans going on simultaneously. Mr. Palm, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman. Of course, my name is Mike Palm and I used to work at IP before it went down. I was a general mechanic out there. And I'm a longtime resident of Morehouse Parish. And it's about all like I said by myself, you know, I'm glad to be appointed on this planning committee and hope that I work out real well with everyone that's on it.
Thank you. Let me also recognize Mr. Dave Williams in the audience. Would you come to the microphone and just brief? I appreciate our zoning officers because they are going to pay a major sacrifice to commit their time. Mr. Williams?
Well, good evening to the mayor and councilman and all that is present. I'm David Williams and I am retired from the Morehouse Parish Sheriff's Department. And I'm the part owner of Max Bobby Queen Grill around the corner here. And I would like to see some of you all there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Item number eight. Oh, I'm sorry. At this time, I will entertain a motion to accept the appointment of Mr. Mike Palm.
I make the motion that we accept Mike Palm as the owner of Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you.
And I'll second it.
Properly moved and second. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item number eight. Give mayor authority to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the city marshal on the use of a vehicle. Chief Black?
The vehicle that we're talking about is a police car that we were using, that we purchased and used. And now we have taken it offline. And normally, we would put it in an auction. However, the marshal's office is in need of vehicles. And I think they want to agree, enter into an agreement with the city to use that car as their car and reimburse the city for the insurance and take up the cost for the maintenance and gas and what have you for the vehicle, use of the vehicle.
Okay. We have our city marshal present, Ms. Lisa Chafford, and one of her staff members. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Properly moved and second. Any questions? Discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item number nine. Permission to advertise for bids for equipment, Bastrop Police Technology Grant, 2008. Chief Black?
This grant, we've used, probably bid of it, but we still have some left. And we're asking the city council to give permission to go ahead and advertise bid for whatever equipment we need to finish out the grant. I think we just advertised for some new radio equipment for the new radio room. But also, there's money for other types of equipment that we're asking permission to go ahead and advertise for bids for.
Okay. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to give Chief Black the authority he needs.
I'll second.
Properly moved and second. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11. I'm on the right page?
Ten.
Ten, okay. I drew the square when I should. Resolution 091300, declaring certain movable property no longer needed for public use, authorizing the sale of each movable property at public auction, authorizing the employment of a licensed auctioneer for such auction sale, and providing for publication in accordance with the law. Chief Black?
Well, some of this equipment is abandoned property and what have you that we have at the department. And we're just, it's time to get rid of it and sell it. And I think in addition to that, there may be some other city property. I think we still have a car that's available, maybe some other equipment that's available for sale also.
Okay. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, Mayor. Resolution 091300.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Properly moved and second. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Goldman. Item number 12. Okay, at this time, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to give Chief Black the authority he needs.
I second.
Properly moved and second. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11. I'm on the right page?
Ten.
Ten, okay. I drew the square when I should. Resolution 091300, declaring certain movable property no longer needed for public use, authorizing the sale of each movable property at public auction, authorizing the employment of a licensed auctioneer for such auction sale, and providing for publication in accordance with the law. Chief Black?
Well, some of this equipment is abandoned property and what have you that we have at the department. And we're just, it's time to get rid of it and sell it. And I think in addition to that, there may be some other city property. I think we still have a car that's available, maybe some other equipment that's available for sale also.
Okay, at this time, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion, Mayor. Resolution 091300.
Thank you.
I second.
Properly moved and second. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Item number 11. Resolution 091301, a resolution of the mayor and board of all the persons of the city of Bastrop, Louisiana, to appoint Beth Waxman, partner with Waxman, number three, as consultant for the DEQ City of Bastrop Project Number 1126 as per the terms of the written consultant agreement presented. Ms. Goldman?
Mayor, this is in conjunction with the stimulus package, our Sura project. It's the loan that we approved, where it's going to forgive us at the end, at no interest. This is in conjunction with your name and her. It's the labor consultant. She will look over this project to be sure that it follows the banking dangerous labor law. And with Mr. Corrigan, she's done a real good job. We need a motion to accord her.
At this time, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion?
I second.
Motion and second. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Goldman. Item number 12. Ordinance 094193, an ordinance to amend ordinance Number 084169, to amend the provisions of the enabling ordinance for the Bastrop Historic District to provide limitations on the number of sidewalk signs that may be used in the historic district. Mr. Lawrence?
Thank you, Mayor. This item is for introduction only on tonight because under the city charter, you have to introduce an ordinance of this type in one meeting. And then at the following meeting, actually act on the item. So it is up for introduction. There also may be an amendment because the indication that I've received is that there is a desire for perhaps to not only cover sidewalk signs, but actually elevated exterior signs. So there may be an amendment to this. And I would request, Mayor, that we fix a public hearing time, say 15 minutes prior to the start of the next, of the regular council meeting in October, at which time we can hear any discussion on this issue in the form of a public hearing. And if the matter remains as it should be, we can take up final adoption at the October meeting.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lawrence. This is an item that does not require any action at this point. It's going to lay over. That's correct, Mr. Lawrence?
That's correct.
Okay. Item number 13. I'm going to defer to our city attorney. Relford versus Bastrop Municipal Police.
Mayor, on this particular matter, very limited comment here. This is only to inform the mayor and board of all the persons of this litigation that's pending before the Court of Appeals. Unless there is a particular reason or desire for this body to convene into an executive session to discuss the particulars at this point, there's no need to. And I can simply keep you up to speed as we proceed or keep you up to, keep you informed as we proceed with handling this case. And in actuality, the same would be true on the matters listed as item 14 and 15 as well on the agenda.
Thank you for that update. At this time, I'd like to request a motion to expand the agenda.
Make a motion to expand the agenda.
Second.
Properly moved and second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. I'd like to appoint, is Reverend McCullough here, Ms. Goldman? Okay. I would like to appoint Reverend L. H. McCullough to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And he has accepted this appointment, hasn't he, Ms. Goldman? Okay. So I will entertain a motion from this council to accept this appointment.
I'll make a motion.
I second.
Properly moved and second. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.